It's called officially Sound Town Hall Meeting. And we're very excited to have this opportunity because it fits in with our very mission to provide beneficial opportunities for the community to come together and learn and share experiences and knowledge and grow. And it gives us great pleasure to host Congressman Chris Gibson, Senator Betty Little, and Assemblyman Tony Jordan here this evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Seth. I'm a time supervisor at Salem, and we're all coming tonight. A lot of interesting things going on at Salem, and I welcome you all. Tonight, we have Congressman Chris Gibson, Senator Betty Little, and Assemblyman Tony Jordan. But before we get started, I'd like to ask everyone to stand for questions.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda for this evening will be each guest figure will have some time to talk, and after they talk, we'll have open for questions and answers. And what you can do is raise your hand and come up here as we drop and ask your question, and hopefully you'll get an answer. So I'll turn the floor over to Senator Little.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate everyone coming out. I appreciate having that opportunity to be here and to join with Chris and Tom. So this year, I think that things are better in the state. I think the fact that we have a governor who is exhibiting leadership and is working with both houses, the Senate and the Assembly, has made a huge difference. We did what we were supposed to do, but a big surprise because we haven't done it before. But we have got a budget that's on top. It's a difficult budget, but it's no more difficult than what all of our families have been facing when they had to make difficult choices. And it was time for the state to make those difficult choices as well. I think as we move forward, we'll hopefully see the economy change and that some of the efficiencies that the governor is developing and merging some of the agencies and trying to be more efficient with the resources that we have will help us going into next year's vote. But when we go back, our next thing on the agenda is a badly needed ethics bill that I support, and we're going to be doing before we leave, and many other pieces of legislation. I'm chairman of the Tourism Committee on the Senate. Very pleased to do that. We've had some meetings here in Washington County. One thing that was brought up was the need to get some of the bikers from New York City up on the rail train. So they would call Joe Boardman. He had been DOT Commissioner here in New York State. He's now President of Mantra. This is a nice connection to have. And we are getting a baggage car on the Adirondack train that will be coming through back and forth from New York. It's a little more complicated than I thought it was going to be, but I guess that's bureaucracy. But we will have one, and hopefully they will, they're going to advertise it. We can get some bikers to come up from the city, spend some time in the New York country while you're coming, and enjoy what we have here. I look forward to your questions and to listening to my colleagues here. Thank you for coming.
I think with the seat of the arms, I'm the moderator, so. Seth, thanks for putting aside. It's great to be here with Betty and Chris and with all of you. It's really nice to be in your own backyard and then seeing such a wide range of folks from all parts of the community here. And it's a real honor to be able to represent 112. And as Betty alluded to, there are some good things happening through it. Not only did we get a on-time budget, due in large part because if the governor said, "Here's my spending plan," and then he partnered with the Senate, Dean Skellos, and his team, which Betty was a major part of, and said, "This is my spending plan. This is as much as we're going to spend." How do you break that down? I'm going to give you wide attitude. But we're not going over. And that is a tremendous change from what I've seen over the past few years. And that's been a real positive for New York going forward. There are still some real challenges ahead. One thing that I just recently learned and we're working on, energy costs in the capital region are 20% greater than anywhere else in the world. Well, we have a heavily dependent agricultural industry on energy costs daily utilities. And with the electrical costs that much higher, on top of the fact that we're higher by 30%, 40%, 50% from our competitors in the ag industry, puts our farms at a distinct disadvantage, whether it's the dairy industry, our crop growers, our vegetable farmers who are trying to grow year-round. And obviously, as we all, when you walked in today, realized it's pretty cold out there to try to grow vegetables, and these folks are trying to do it year-round. So we're really working with the PSC and the Salem. We need to answer our questions as to why don't we have all of these available natural resources? Are we, as a regional state, paying 20% more? So there's a lot of positives. My hope in working with Betty and the Senate is that the governor will show the same energy that he had toward the budget, toward bringing about ethics reform, mandate relief, and really right sizing and adjusting the way government does business. You know, the mandate relief, the key to that is getting the agencies to recognize that they're there to be our partners, not our rulers, our leaders, our dictators. And I thank you, the governor, as ambitious and energetic as this one is, I think we have some opportunities. So thank you. I look forward to that.
Seth, first of all, thank you very much for being here today at the Forum. It is an honor to be with Senator Little and Assemblyman Jordan. And I also, you know, want to thank Jay Malomba from Salem. He's actually the one who reached out to our staff and asked that we do this for you today. Actually, his first request is that there are some here in the town that could use some assistance, some congressional assistance, and we could send the staff out here to take those cases. And we absolutely have done that. We brought staff here today. So if there's some constituent work that we can, you know, take in, we'd be honored to do so. But I communicated with Jay. I said, "No, I want to do it a step better than that. I want to come myself because I want to hear directly from you here today." I've been here before. I've had some wonderful stops here at Salem, including the dinner, support the courthouse here, the press conference dinner. It's a tremendous evening. You think what you have to do, and I really commend you. But more importantly, and beyond that, is what that evening's about. To me, I mean, that evening is really typifies the strength of America because the people who go to that dinner, some of them are liberal, some of them are conservative, some are moderate, some are Democrats, some are Republicans, some are independent, and they all come to support a cause. And you're sitting in the cause right here. This is a historic bill, and you know, it would not be in the state of repair that it's in today were it not for the support of locals here. So I'm actually very excited to be here for this town hall meeting. You know, before we go any further, I would just ask you in double, Seth, this is a time of high emotion in this country. People, very strong views from all quarters. And what I would ask is, we just listened to one another. They come from the strong left and the strong right. I would just ask that when we leave tonight, that we have a better understanding of each other's arguments. I think that that will make us a stronger country, and hopefully we'll get full respect. And somebody has the floor, that will allow them to communicate to us, and that will be received well. What I want to share with you on the front end is a couple things. First of all, I want to tell you that we're working hard every day to serve you. And I've got some of my staff here today. I do have, I would introduce you to a couple of those. My district director, Steve Baldry, that's George Christie here. Okay, George is in the back. So, and what I want you to know is that if you have a case, I would like you to see. George went out of the Glendale Falls office, and I want you to be able to approach him at some point, and we'll begin to take the notes on that and begin to work with your case as far as possible. We close about 90 to 100 cases a week across the 137 towns. About half of them are veterans-related. We've got some tough issues. I'll tell you, I know the guy who's the administrator now, General Sasek. He's got a heart, and I can imagine that guy's really hard for veterans. And so I have noticed over time, when I would be on leave, I would come back here and go to various places, including the VA Center, Stratton VA Center. And I got to tell you, it has made tremendous improvements over time. It's still probably falling short of what you hope and expect, but I would say it's better than it was a decade ago. And you've got a VA administrator right now who really wants something more than to serve veterans. So, you know, we've got VSOs, Veterans Service Officers throughout the tent, including Sam Paul from Washington County, who just tremendous work, somebody you know. We try to come in and backstop and help in any way we can. So that's about half our cases. We work social security assistance. We work immigration issues, passports, really anything we can think of with a federal agency would be there for them. So that's the first thing I wanted to communicate to you. The second thing is what's going on in Washington, D.C. And what animates my decisions on votes is really the pledges that I made after having listened to the constituents in the 137 towns. Our three goals are to grow the economy, create jobs, deficit reduction, to move towards balanced budget by reducing federal spending, and three, protect freedoms. And so those three goals, every morning that I rise, I ask myself, "What am I doing to help on those three goals?" Because, you know, I can leave those goals to help our country. And I also think, even though we're going to certainly have some fear in the Bay area, I think those transcend party goals. I think those are three things that really all of us should want in our country. And, you know, with regard to those three goals, the update I would say is that we recently completed work on last year's budget, the 2011 budget, and that was Thursday before we take that. Lot of coverage on that, a lot of media coverage, and certainly folks that were disappointed on the left and right and what happened. But I'll just say that it was my belief, this, that what we need to do is respect the fact that the American people have sent to Washington, D.C. right now. One party controls the House, one party controls the Senate, and one party controls the White House. Now, in the room here, I'm sure there are people that don't like the fact that one party or the other is in control of one house, you know, or their White House. But that is the reality that we have here. And all of us operate within ingenious constitutional design of the founders' years. The founders trusted no one with absolute loyalty. And, you know, I recommend to you these works here, and this is the Federalist Papers. If you have a chance to read it, this is, I think, some of the most summoning words ever written, but it'll cost me. But in here, you see the founders talk about the fact that they didn't trust anyone with absolute loyalty. And by the way, even the new majority in the House, they wouldn't have trusted that either. So, you know, my point is to you this, is that what I try to do is be part of it that the past bills are reflective of the will of the American people based on the last election. But we also have to then work with the Senate and the White House, or nothing becomes law. And with all due respect to those who say no compromise, you know, to me, if you're saying no compromise, then what you're saying is the status quo is acceptable. Because the founders set up a system where without compromise, not that it's not, the default is no action. And to me, high unemployment, you know, spiraling deficits and the debt and endless wars, these things are unacceptable. That's why I stepped forward to do this. I want to be a positive difference. So I voted for our bill that went to the Senate. The Senate then ignored it with H.R. 1, but then eventually we reached an accommodation. We wanted, we thought that the proper judgment was $100 billion from the president's march. We ended up getting $79 billion from the president's march, which was $39 billion from last year's march. But I would tell you that for those who think that we caved, look, here are the facts. We said we wanted $100 billion worth of cuts. President wanted freeze. We ended up with $79 billion worth of cuts from the president's march. So I would tell you that I think the American people got the right deal. And that is for this discretionary spend. I do want to show you some facts. Can we have a slide here? What I want you to know about the state of our, and many of you here probably heard yesterday the SFP issued a precedent that said that they were concerned about the status of our country, whether or not we have the political will to address the deficit and the debt. And I wanted to show you a few, these charts are from the Congressional Budget Office so that you can see the status of what we're at. Okay, getting the first bill. What I want you to know right off the bat is we've been here before, okay? So we've actually been in the circumstance we're in right now that we're very concerned about the state of our spending, the state of the deficit, and the state of the debt. And I'm trying to allay concerns that people think we can't solve them. Oh, we can absolutely solve them. We've been through tough times before. The American people carry the companies. And as you can see, that after World War II, we took a serious step to reduce spending that eventually got our budget back under control. Go to the next bill. Here's the problem. This is why the SFP issued a statement. They issued a statement because under the current policy, this is where we're going to end up. We're going to end up with a mountain of debt if we don't change the course that we're on. Next slide. Now, this chart is important because there are going to be some here today that talk about taxes and tax increases. I want you to see, here's some facts. This is on the red line, this is spending, okay? On the blue line is receipts or taxes or revenue, should we call it, okay? Now, first of the good news, take a look at this period right here. This is right around the year 2000. We ran surplus as late as about 11 years ago. So, you know, while we certainly have a big hole to get out of, we have actually done this in the past. And incidentally, when that was achieved, this is when we had a Democrat in the White House and a Republican-controlled Congress, just for the record. Now, take a look at what happened. What happened is, over time, we cut spending, and at the same time, revenues grew. This is your, remember the dot-com growth, all that, when we had growth in the internet? What you see here is growth in our receipts. Now, you may think that came from tax increases. That actually didn't come from tax increases. That came from receipts, the increases in growth in the economy. This is when our economy was growing between 4% and 5% gross domestic profit. So what we want to achieve is something like this. We're back to balanced budgets and we get back to the surplus. What's important to know is, from this chart, one takeaway is, is that there isn't one party that contributed to the mess we're in. Both parties contributed to the mess we're in today. What I get tired of in Washington, D.C. is I have Republicans who say it's all the Democrats' fault, and Democrats who say it's all the Republicans' fault. But that's not my reading of this. My reading is both parties had something to do with this. Now, the concern is, this is what happened when we went into recession, partly as a result of the Wall Street situation. But two things happened. Look at this, look at receipts. Receipts dropped, we dropped about $300 billion in receipts, okay? Now, spending spiked right here. Most economists will tell you that healthy spending for an economy such as ours should not exceed 20% of gross domestic profit. We have occasionally went over that, but this is an important line to be tracked, 20% of gross domestic profit. In most cases, your revenue should be somewhere around 18%. Now, when, some of you may have heard me on the radio or the TV and you hear me talk about how we can make up a quarter of the deficit with growth. This is why. This is why. Because we lost $300 billion in receipts when we went into recession, when America, when we had this serious unemployment situation. We can make this up if we can get America back to work, and we can make an additional $100 billion, I think. I think we can make up $400 billion of growth if we can get unemployment back down to 3.5% to 4%. This is why I support a pro-growth approach to fighting the deficit. And that's why I support addressing taxes, regulation, healthcare costs, and energy costs. Because these are the impediments to growth. We probably have some small business owners out there today. And certainly, there would be variegated responses, but generally speaking, these are the four things that eat into your bottom line: taxes, regulation, healthcare costs, and energy costs. And energy was just mentioned moments ago. This is why I'm passionate about energy. This is why I pulled together an energy advisory panel, and why I pulled together an agricultural advisory panel. And it's because we're paying too much for energy. You know, we're all products of our experience. I'm no different. I come from a working-class family. My dad worked for the elevator, part of the union there. And, you know, my dad is a proud guy. He never made a lot of money. And, you know, I mean, he could sit around waiting on a check from the government, except when he was out of work. And then, I'll tell you, we deeply appreciated that unemployment check. And I believe in safety. That helped us get through some really tough times. But you know what crushed our family? Is when the gas prices went through the roof in the 1970s. Every time that that calm changed, our family cringed because we knew something was going out for New York. Every time, every time they were moving back then, they used to take a little thing and push it up there and change that price. You know, that meant something was coming off the table for us. And that, that experience has never left me, you know? We're paying too much for gas. We're paying too much for home heating. And we're paying too much for electricity. And why is that? It's really in the paper. The Seratogen had an article on this yesterday. Something that our panel has certainly been talking about for some time. Supply doesn't match demand in our area. It goes beyond that. It's really a state and a national issue. With an increase in supply, we will drive down prices. And so what we need to be doing is looking across the full expanse of energy, all renewables, solar, wind, hydro, bio, natural gas, gas and oil, and nuclear power. And we'll talk about that. I know some are probably going to have some concern. But I want you to at least understand why I believe that. I believe that because I think if we increase the supply of energy, we'll pay less for it. And see, that's the thing that I think will help working-class families and middle-class families, is that they're paying back for energy, is what they're paying right now. And I want to tell you, you've got folks right here in this room that are helping me. Jay is one of the ones. He's a solar power expert. He's helping me on the panel. We have, we have leaders of business on the panel. We have union leaders on the panel. We've got experts from all across the field. And the first thing we're doing is, if you go on our website tonight, gibson.housebackup, you will see a section where we have the incentives for renewable energy. You'll find it now. You'll know that there's a 30% investment tax credit for investing in photovoltaics and into the solar power. We have farmers that have done this in the past six months and are already saving money. So this is an intensely personal choice as to what you decide to go towards. And your family budget, I mean, it's not inexpensive. It is expensive to invest in some stuff. But for farmers, you know, that have overhead of energy costs, when they look at their business plan, in many cases, it makes sense for them to invest in solar power. But let's also be realistic. Not one of these sources is going to be able to get us the amounts of energy that we need. We need extensive energy from across, we consume about a quarter of the world's energy right now. And we're not talking about standing still. We're talking about growing our economy. And I do believe that we'll see the day when we have hybrid electric cars. It may be a decade, it may be two decades from now, but I think we're heading in that direction. And when we do, we're going to plug in our cars in. We're going to need access to significant amount of new energy. And this is one of the reasons why I support nuclear power as well. And I'm not alone on that. There'll be some people in this room, and there's some people opposed, but the President of the United States supports it too. And my point is this, is that when we have dialogue about it, let's recognize that there are bipartisan people who support it, and there are bipartisan people who don't. It's more of a judgment call as to what you think is the right energy source, less than it is politics. So, but let me also reassure you before I turn it over to your comments and questions that, look, myself, my panel, we're not going to force any decision. Not a single decision, whether it's solar or anything else, or nuclear power. You know, I would never do that. That's something that has to be decided locally. And I think the town should vote. If the town decides that they're going to come forward with a proposal, for example, for nuclear power, they should vote on it before they do. And before they vote, they should have the experts on both sides come. Now, our panel will provide experts that can be an advocate for any one of the energy sources, including nuclear power. But when they come to your town, then whoever's going to speak for the opposition should come. And I'll allow them to, whoever's they're going to be, should be able to be at the town too. So you should be able to have a meeting like this, where you can have the access to sign and the presentation, and the town will be making its own choice. But I want you to understand why I'm passionate about this issue. Because we should not accept this. We should be independent. We don't have to be dependent on other countries. We absolutely can do it right here in America. And we can pay less for energy. And when we address the impediments to growth, taxes, regulation, healthcare costs, and energy costs, we will grow this economy. We'll get America back to work, and our best days will still be in front of us. Thank you for investing time to come here tonight. I look forward to your questions and comments. Thanks.
Would you like to ask anybody a question? Raise your hand, come forward, and let's give a shenanigans.
Hello. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for our presentation of the Sound of the Street. I just have a question. Just like that, who might move up a little bit quicker with we rescinded the tax cuts and started the vote? I don't know how Congressman Gibson addressed that, but I was wondering if it would make you think of my view, because I understand this is a problem, but that has not created more for.
Thank you very much, Barbara. And I'll address, can you bring that slide back up? Okay. I will tell you that my--
I have your question.
Okay, yes, the question was, thank you. The question had to do with tax policy and whether or not I still believe that keeping the people's tax cuts of '01 to '03 is the right move for our country. And the short of it is, for right now, I would say yes, that we should. And here's why. Number one is, the state of our economy is still fragile. I thought we could grow between 3.5% and 4% this year, and that's going to be very difficult based on the energy costs, the costs that we're paying now. Energy cascades all the way across our economy, and it eats up some of our GDP growth. I still think we can grow between 3% and 3.5%. What I will tell you in this, Barbara, is, first again, is our proposal in our budget calls for broadening the base. Broadening the base is another way of saying we need to close some loopholes. We've got a situation where we have corporations that make billions of dollars, and they're not paying any taxes. And I don't think that's right. So what we need to do is figure out a way to close loopholes or work other measures so that everyone, including corporations, pays their share. And I also believe that for now, that should be revenue mutual. So the money that we get from corporations paying their share should go into lowering marginal tax rates so we can create jobs right here. Now, let me explain why. I think that when this situation, when we get spending back down to here, and we get gross domestic profit growth back to 4%, and we're still having issues, then I think that everything should be on the table, that we can take a look at. But until we get spending back down to where it should be, we shouldn't be looking at tax increases. Because what's going to end up happening is, we're going to be ill-disciplined. We're not going to address the proper level of spending. So I'm not one of those who says never to tax. I don't think that that would be prudent. You never know. You can't predict the future. But before you go there, I think we need to get discipline into our system and get our spending back to control and ensure that we can have the growth that we need in our economy. And how, and what I'm influenced there is by listening to small business owners who tell me why it is that they're not growing in this coming year. So I'm sure we may still disagree on this, but I only understand in my thought process why it is that I believe that now is not the time to raise those taxes. And by the way, when I say no one can predict the future, I think, you know, once we get spending to where it is, where it should be in terms of discipline, then that's where I think we should, we should oppose structural changes to make sure that we don't do this again. Now, that means that if you got a new, you know, whatever it may be, if you want to increase discretionary domestic spending, or if you end up fighting a war, and let's hope we get these wars done and not have to fight again. But it's not, to me, it's not right to, that you don't address things. You can't have a situation where spending goes up and you don't pay for it. And that's why I don't think you can rule out tax increases in the future. But I don't think it's the right call right now. I think what we have to do is get the spending under control before we ever look to tax increases. Because what we don't want to do is end up with a situation where we go the other way. Right now, I think we have a chance to grow between 3% and 3.5%, and then hopefully get it up to 4% later on, particularly in energy costs now. But if we end up sliding back the other way, that means more people are going to be unemployed, which means we'll have to have more in the safety net, which we support. We're going to have to pay more in services, and we're not going to gain as much in receipts. And that actually exacerbates the deficit. It doesn't help. So anyways, even if you don't agree with it, that's my logic. I'm certainly willing to redress it if you'd like to come back. Go, Senator.
Steve O'Neill, Rockwood, Rockwell. Thank you all for being here. The question I have, as you mentioned, the Agicall Society, you also, Congressman Dixon, sit on the Armed Services Committee. And you have mentioned, I didn't get all of it, but there were several areas that you talked about where we might lower the defense spending as a major part of our budget, actually being in the president's mind very much as well. But could you possibly explain just how much we're talking about some of the specifics that are involved in that and what we've been looking at? And also, what is the realistic process to make that, make that happen, to make those cuts?
Okay, those are all three questions. You can be turned by my own. All right. So the answer, there's a two-part answer to your question. The first part of the answer deals with the realities and the assumptions that are in place right now, which I have a problem with, quite frankly. And then there's what I think should occur, which is major comprehensive law and protocol. The answer to the first part, which is, what are the savings in the current budget? There's $70 billion, $78 billion in the baseline budget for savings of the defense department. That comes from Secretary Gates's recommendations in terms of contracting. It comes in terms of closing, eliminating the joint forces to man headquarters. It includes savings in terms of troop levels after we finish Iraq and Afghanistan, beginning in 2015. There's a series of assumptions that have gone into Secretary Gates's budget that saves $78 billion. And then, beginning in 2015, there's an additional $70 to $80 billion in OCOs, overseas contingency operation savings. So that's where you are today in terms of this budget proposal. And there's really very little difference, actually, between the Obama administration and the GOP budget. They're pretty much alike. My issue is this, and first of all, you know, you should know that as somebody who spent 29 years in the military, five years in the National Guard, and then 24 years in the Army, you know, I believe in this way of life, and I would do everything, I was willing to give down my life for protecting this way of life, this cherished way of life. But I also believe that the national security establishment we have right now is not what we need for the 21st century. And that takes a second to explain. You know, we, you look at the history of our country from the founding until about 1941 or so, and we were a country that believed in a small standing force. We believed in a National Guard and a Navy that was able to give full presence for us. And that allowed us to achieve our interests, to secure our interests, protect our country, and to secure our interests. We fought World War II. We had to expand our, we had to expand for millions of Americans in uniform. And we fought and won that war to protect democracy. And then what happened is, is we end up with a struggle against the Soviet Union, a major ideological struggle against the Soviet Union Cold War that ensued for really about the next 50 years. We prevailed. And contrary to what historians were expecting, and let's all be thankful for this, really without a major war. It's very remarkable, the fact that it ended that way. What we haven't done is, we haven't, we haven't gone back as a country, we haven't had a conversation about what it means now to protect this republic. We haven't had a fundamental conversation about it. And because of that, in my view, we end up involved in so many different operations that we shouldn't be involved in. Let me just say, for example, look, my heart goes out to the people. They want to live free lives. But we don't know enough about those rebels. We had Secretary Gates in front of us. And I would tell you that, we asked him, and you can say what you want about Secretary Gates, but he's a very candid man. And we said, well, what do we know about those rebels? And he said, well, other than the top eight, we don't know a lot. This is very concerning. We should not be dropping bombs on another country like this because of the second, first order effects, and then the second and third order effects. So what I want to see is new, is have a national discussion about what it means to protect our cherished way of life. Because I think, when that occurs, we will then realize that we are a republic, not an empire. The track record on empires is not good. And we don't want to be that. We want to be a republic. Our greatest strength is our ideas. You know, when you think about the debate that goes on, the freedom that we have, and you listen to immigrants who come here even now, and they'll say the same thing. They can't believe how fortunate they are to be here. And all our families, that's our greatest strength. Our next greatest strength is our Congress and trade, and our diplomacy, always backed up by the deterrent of a strong military. But there's a difference between the model I just described and one where we lead with our chin. You know, that is not, we end up, right now, we have forces laid down all over the world. We have command and control headquarters that impact the entire globe. And I don't think we're going to save it for number one. Number two is, we can't afford it. We cannot afford it. And that's why I agree in spirit with what the President said and what Senator Trump said. My concern is, you don't jump to the money right away. You've got to have a conversation first. You've got to have, what kind of country are you going to be? And then, once we decide that, then we figure out what, what kind of joint vision are we going to have to protect our cherished way of life? What are the force structure that's required for that? That's where you can get you the money. But I do believe we can save money. I do believe, once we've gone through all of that, it will cost less than it does now. And I actually believe we'll be safe. We'll be safe. And by the way, anybody who thinks that's isolationism, I'm willing to debate you, because I don't think so. We're going to stay involved diplomatically and with our trade. We're just, right now, we have a series of things that occur overseas. And when they have protocol, the number one seat goes to the, what they call the Sint, the Commander in Chief. And that's because we empower military formations overseas. Right? That should be the ambassador. We always have a strong military back in the United States, but we have too much of a forward presence of our military overseas. So I mean, that's my viewpoint. But I think it's important that we go through the intellectual process to get to the point where we reform our national security establishment. Incidentally, I'm not alone. Dwight D. Eisenhower said the same thing. He was concerned about the military industrial complex, but the thing took over, and essentially we ended up continuing to defeat that beast. I don't think that's the right way to go about protecting us for the 21st century. I think we're capable of so much more.
My name is Catherine Trent. And I think my question will be a little bit about it. It's my understanding that maybe Congress wants to invigorate social security, our social network. And the latest news we have concerns privatizing social security. I remember the Great Depression myself. I was born in the Great Depression. I stood in line as a child to get flour to my mother for making bread. I was in Minnesota, and we had to move to people policies. We had no social network at that time. And we're riding the gray hills looking for work, just so they didn't... So for me, there's no question, we must stabilize our programs. I mean, that's pretty clear to me. But it seems to me that there are certain ones that are useless that we could go away with. But not by handing the money over to Wall Street. We've just been through that downside with Wall Street. Those people lost a lot of the money. And if this is going to fund social security, I don't understand it. I guess I would want to know, it seems to me that handing the money to Wall Street will just increase their finances. It seems to me that they have really good money now. And I guess my question to you is, are you in favor of privatizing social security?
Okay. Thank you for the question. It was beautifully written. I'm not for privatizing social security, and I'm also happy to tell you that it's not on the table on this, but, you know, I think it's a program that all Americans have come to embrace. All, it's quite too strong a word, but I think most Americans have come to embrace. We're paying to it all throughout your lives, and then in the autumn of your life, it's something you can count on in part of your budget. In fact, about half of Americans, that is. So, you know, there is no proposal in this to privatize social security. I don't support it, and I would vote against it. And, you know, while we're at it, let's talk about Medicare and Medicaid. There's a lot of talk about that, too. The first thing we should know is, in our budget, if you're a senior citizen right now, there's no change. There's no change in our budget proposal, which is a proposal that's going to have to complete the entire process that we described earlier, in terms of working with Senate and President. But there, there's no change to current senior citizens. For those 55 years and older, there's no change. For those 54 years and younger, we're talking about modifying the program to strengthen it, as you point out, so we can stabilize the program going forward. Look, the Congressional Budget Office, you know, within a decade, according to the CBO, Medicare is going to be broken. So I mean, that's what we're dealing with, is that reality. And what our proposal does is it gives future seniors the same choices that members of Congress have right now. In fact, if there's anybody here on Medicare Advantage, Medicare Part D, we do have a good number of folks in our district that are on, that's what we're talking about going forward, is a program where you would choose government-approved plans. There's about half a dozen of them or so that would be under this proposal. You'd be able to choose the one that you want, and then a premium support would go from the government to that insurance company to pay for your coverage. Now furthermore, under this proposal, for Medicare, under this proposal, if you're at the poverty line, or if you're 150% of the poverty line, which, you know, my initial estimate is, for our district, would be about 30 to 40%, would be in that category, you would also get a health savings account, which is $7,800 to cover out-of-pocket, out-of-pocket expenses. So we're talking $15,800 worth of coverage for a good number of people in our district under this plan. Now, how that's paid for is partly, those in the top 2% of wealth, they would, instead of getting $8,000 of premium support, they would get about $35,000. Those in the top 3% to 8%, instead of getting $8,000, they would get $4,000 of premium support. So, look, this is a proposal to stabilize a program. It's not law. This is our proposal, and I look forward to hearing another proposals. But I think this is a good start on a way to strengthen the program going forward. Medicare. On the Medicare, our proposal is to, instead of having the federal and the state government involved in Medicaid, we're talking about doing block rents and giving it to the states to administer. Right now, you have a situation, I hear, every time I do one of these panel meetings, I tend to hear comments that people are tired of the unfunded mandates at all levels of government. They're tired of being told what to do, and then told, use your budget to pay for it. This partly addresses that. And it also, like Medicare reform, addresses the fraud, waste, and abuse situation. You know, what we want to do is have that program strengthened for people who need, for people who need that safety net. And I'll tell you, Warren Calhoun has actually made some, I think, some tremendous strides in terms of working fraud, waste, and abuse on the Medicare and Medicaid side. The Medicare reform, there are some estimates are $48 billion a year in the country that ends up going to fraud, waste, and abuse. Because you have a system right now, if you're a provider and you have a tax ID, you can send the bill into the government. And we just don't have the way to have oversight. It gets paid. Whereas, under this proposal, it would at least have the oversight of those pre-approved plans that are staying in. If that person didn't call in for coverage, that this coverage would occur. So anyways, you know, I just want to share with you that, on the Medicaid side, the last thing I want to say is, look, this is the first step of this discussion as to the specifics as what that would mean for our state. That's something we would work in detail, and I would work in concert with our state reps in the House of Representatives, on both sides of the aisle, and our senators, along with the government, so that we could get the kind of block rent, I think, that would make it a good program for us. But what it does is, against the federal government, right now, I mean, you've got a system where you've got the feds and the state running the Medicaid program. And this would put it in what we would used to call the military unity of effort. We would have, you know, one ball smoking that program. This is our proposal going forward. I know you just asked about social security, but while we're not addressing, we're not touching social security, I did want to address Medicare and Medicaid.
I'll just stay right here, maybe you can hear it a little better. My name is Kevin Vayler. I've been living up here over 30 years. I'm a retired New York City fireman, 21 years. And family lives up here. I've got eight grandchildren. I have my own business now. And in my hand, I have my quarterly road tax for my two trucks. Now, in speaking with some of the highway people out here from the state, the engineers, I'm paying almost 34 cents a mile for each truck quarterly. And they tell me that this money goes into a general fund, number one. Number two, that the 10-cent tax for our road use for the gasoline goes into a general fund. Our roads are falling apart up here. Route 22 is a mess. I drive a school bus, and the shoulders are collapsing. Twice, I had tractor trailers go into one of them, drift over into my lane, and where I had to jam the brakes on in the bus, so on and so forth. I know we have an infrastructure problem here with the state. Last year, that, I know they've been putting money into the bridges. And, but we desperately need to get our roads repaid. And I like an answer to that question, where is this money going that we're paying every quarter? And diesel fuel is the lifeblood of this country. And we need to do something with the diesel fuel to get it back down. Last year, at this time, it was $2.95 a gallon. We're at $4.29 here, and it's higher than some of the other towns. I mean, something has to be done with the diesel fuel so the business, the small business people can operate. And the farmers, who can't increase their money by milk or that, are going to have to live with this. And there's no way for them to get any extra money where milk is $15 to $18 a hundred pounds, or whatever it is. And they don't get an increase of any money that comes in. And they're getting killed, and now they're going to have to go out and start planting. And where is this diesel fuel going to go to? $5 a gallon? I do have one quick thing for Congressman Gibson. My son's in the military, about 10 years. I had a frantic phone call from him the other day, and the government was going to shut down. I cannot believe, and I hope and pray that we're going to institute a law, get a law, where these men and women are not going to have to worry about their money coming in. They should be guaranteed that money. They're out there putting their lives on the line. And is it true that the President was going to veto a bill or two bills that were proposed for giving the troops their money? Did he, did he say on record that he was going to veto that?
I'll say this, Kevin. First of all, I appreciate your comments very much, and I appreciate your family's service. I mean, this is one of the reasons why I was very active. When I went to DC, I didn't join the party of raps. I mean, there are people who joined and it's called whip operation. You know, I joined the policy community, because I thought I did the best review. But when that meet came for this CR, I went to leadership and I said, I'll go around explaining what's going to happen if this government shuts down. I wanted to see us reduce spending, pass the bill. I didn't want to see us shut the government down. That's ill-disciplined. And we'd have a situation where we'd have men and women that are forward, fighting on for war for us and not getting paid. It's unacceptable to me. So I will tell you, I think this, very personally, I worked very hard all throughout my conference to explain to them what the impacts would be. And by the way, that's only one impact. For those that think we saved money by shutting the government down, that's not my reason for this. Because we make ourselves vulnerable being sued by small business. And if we get sued, we're going to have to recruit lawyers. We may end up having to settle out of courts. And not to mention the drawback on the economy. You know, when you have peer tourism, the chairs at committee, so much of our economy, farming and tourism. And when you shut these national parks down, those revenues will not get. I'm not convinced at all, in fact, that in the early days, we lose money in the shutdown. I'm from cutting spending, and my votes show, my votes show that I'm staying true to my commitments to you. But I don't think shutting the government is the right thing down. And so, Kevin, that did not happen. The President signed the bill. So the bipartisan people stuck together, and they came together for agreement. We made sure the troops were paid.
Okay, very good.
I would just address that part of it as well. My son is also in the Navy, and I got chewed out for about 20 minutes as far as the discussion as to not just the not getting paid part, the amount of time and energy and hours being wasted planning for a government shutdown. And in many ways, you know, I didn't think it would happen, and but it didn't happen. But I think we have to avoid any connotation that it might happen going forward. Getting to your talk about the mileage, first of all, the truck mileage tax is something that we have tried to, it did get reduced once since then in the legislature. We actually tried to say that the truckers would be willing to pay more in registration fees and not pay the truck mileage tax. Trucks, many trucking companies are centered out of Vermont and other states so that they don't have to pay that and do as much paperwork as you do during New York State. It's something we have not been able to accomplish, but we continue to do it. The price of diesel, the price of gas, the price of oil, as was stated, it is eating our economy right now. And we have to do something about it. We have to get away from the climate.
Drill. 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 It's okay for the President to allow drilling in Brazil, deep water drilling, and it's not here. China are sucking the oil out of the same watermelon, so to speak. And our men and women that are looking for jobs are now sitting there, collecting unemployment that you and I and everybody else are paying for when they're willing to go out for work. We need to be drilling.
The areas on the Gulf Coast, because those people lost their jobs by cutting back on the amount of drilling that could take place. That is their business. This was one accident. Hopefully, they've done some rozzies, and it won't have to get. We're getting back to where that money goes. The money does go into a lock box. It is for highways and bridges. However, in the last six, seven years, started using some of that money for the operation of the Vehicle Department, some of that money for snow and ice removal. of the Vehicle Department, some of that money for snow and ice removal. We voted on a bill in the Senate sponsored by Senator Livis, and I was a co-chair of that bill, that over the course of the next few years would phase that out, so that that money goes directly to roads and bridges. We're an older state. Our bridges are old, our roads are old. We try to pave over, blacktop over concrete roads and do the shoulders in the blacktop. It just doesn't work.
But I mean, this is penny wise, dollar foolish. The, I just got my paperwork for the prices for peccans. Now, the asphalt has gone up from $10 to $12 per tonne, because it's a petroleum-based product. I mean, that was a stake and a half to dole out that much more money per tonne to redo our roads and that.
Well, it is. It's going to cost more. Everybody saw what happened at the Crown Point Bridge. It's cost a lot more because the plan was not there as to what, if this bridge fails, what are we going to do? So the cost of the ferry every single day, we have incentives for the contractor to finish earlier. Hopefully, that's going to be open by October, if not sometime this September.
But looking at the infrastructure of that bridge there, when they showed it on TV, the people that are to blame are the inspectors for not bringing that up and being forthright with that, to have that bridge repaired.
And that number of bridges in New York State were identified at a lower number than that bridge was. So what we're finding is the infrastructure is so old. We don't invest in our infrastructure.
But this road needs, this road is a priority up here. Anybody that drives a truck up and down this road, we're all over the road up here. This road from the Village of Salem, Southern End, up to Granville, it's a priority. And I would hope you would keep it in mind. And we need something done with our roads.
We don't have our five-year plan. We have a two-year plan that was put in place, and now we have to get the rest of the money. We're supposed to get our five-year plan at the same time we get the MTA five-year plan with Metropolitan Transit. What we had in the last few years was a totally New York City administration. And despite the fact they had roads and bridges, they also had the MTA, it was their big thing. That got a five-year plan. Our roads and bridges have, it's a priority for us. And I believe it's a priority for this governor to work with us, and we will have one. And I can get you more direct figures. I don't have them with me, but I'd be glad.
You've got enough to do. But remember, the diesel fuels are the lifeblood of the country. And we really, you're not going to run a tractor trailer or one of our big vehicles on solar power. All right? We need to get this diesel fuel issue straightened out.
Put a windmill on the top of it.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Steve Tabarino. I'm from Queensbury. I'm on a mission. I have a question I was asked to ask for someone who could not make it tonight. I'm going to ask this question, and then I'm going to, I'm going to kidnap the podium for 30 seconds. I'm at liberty to speak my mind, okay? I'm Joe Sixpack. And I have liberties that you dear people don't have as elected public officials, okay? My question is this. Congressman Gibson, recently, there was an HR 658 that had to deal with the unionization of airlines and railroad workers, and you voted in favor of that, although the bill was defeated 220 to 206. To whatever degree that's not correct, please help me.
I will.
Okay?
Thank you.
Hold that. I'm going to make a statement. Please.
You probably should try to sponsor it. You probably want to hear what I have to say before you can say it.
Oh, go ahead. Okay.
Okay. Look, this is an example where I think it's better to do what's right and take the time to explain it to you than to do what others do, which is just to vote along party lines. This is what this talk is about. Okay? Remember the advantage, when I come from the military this last year, I come from a very, I think, commonsensical perspective. Across all of America, on the issue of organization, on unionization, it goes like this. You go into an outfit and you vote. Whoever gets the most votes, that's what decides the issue. But not for FAA, not for, they had a special set size that went like this, sir. You may be surprised about that. Let's say there's 3,000 people in the organization, okay? 3,000 people. And let's say 2,000 show up. If 1,400 show up to vote to unionize, and 600 of them show up to vote and say no, what do you think the American way is? 1,400 show up and say that based on conditions, they want to unionize. 600 say, no, we don't want to unionize. What do you think the American way is? Should they be able to unionize?
Yes.
Yes. That bill was wrong. That bill said that you don't get to unionize with 1,400 votes. That vote, that bill was about upholding 1,501 as the answer, because you count the not votes as not unionized. To me, that's wrong. Look, here's the thing. This is an intensely personal choice as to whether or not to unionize. You know, if you want to unionize, vote yes. If you don't want to unionize, vote no. If you really don't want to unionize, get all your friends to vote no. But don't come to me to skew the rules. That's not right. They wanted me, my party wanted me to say, hey, just vote for this. You know, you don't want to have to go back home and explain this vote. And I said, wait, hold on a second. Give me the details. And when I learned, I said, you're kidding me. You want me to vote for that? You want me to vote that 1,400 people vote to unionize and 600 vote no, that the answer's no? I don't think that's right. And I'm certainly willing to hear your point on that. I don't think that's right.
First, I trust your judgment. This is, this is not my issue. I'm asking this question as a favor to someone who couldn't be here.
Please tell them, please tell them, and I'm going to send them any information that is the truth. What I just told you is, and by the way, that story is, in almost every quarter, it's like that, that they had a special cutout for the FAA, that they had special rules. And I didn't think that was right.
Okay. My comment is this, I'm going to capture the podium for 30 seconds, okay? It's been said that our government is the most stable in the world because revolution has been built into the ballot box. I pray to our maker that this, the ballot box holds. I sense intuitively that the man we have in the White House does not have America as his first interest. Okay? That he has his own agenda. Many of them agree with me, many don't. It doesn't matter. But I believe if we don't get this man out of here in a couple of years, America as we know it is going down. Thank you.
So to our economy, the billions of dollars, particularly in New York State, that it contributes to the economy. And as a self-employed artist who have been doing this for a long time, every time the stock market goes down 2,000 points, I can be assured of two years of no income. And so what I want to ask you is, our recent fall was due to lack of regulation on Wall Street. And I want to know if Congress is going to have hearings about that, and if anyone from Wall Street will be held accountable for the crash.
Okay. First of all, thank you for that, and I appreciate your life way that you commit yourself to. And let me just double back and just say that I think it's clear that on politics and on policy, I disagree with the President on more than half, even on many issues. But you know, I've met him too. And I don't think he's a bad guy. I don't think he's out to harm our country. I think he's wrong, and I tried to convince him of it. I believe the strength of America really is here. It's in policies that are conducive to empowering communities, and in some cases, states. And that's why I vote to address the taxes, regulations, healthcare costs, and energy costs, because I think that's what will grow our economy and lead to a flourishing form of life. The President comes from a different perspective as far as what the federal government can do to help communities here. We have a disagreement. But I'll tell you, we agree on some things, too. You know, I think he recognizes the fact that energy is important to our future. I don't support a tax cap and tax or cap and trade. But I think he recognizes, he recognizes that we need all energy sources. What I'd like to see him do is address more than most needed. And that's the drill. We have to do that. Look, we can all envision a better place when we have cleaner energy. But the fact of the matter is, for working class families, when you pay $4.07 per gallon, whatever it may be, $4,000, this is crushing people that don't have a lot of money. So we can't afford it. So to me, we've got to increase our supply. We've got to increase our drilling. And clearly, we're not opposed to it in theory, because we're doing it in other countries. So we have a fundamental disagreement on that. But I do want to tell you that I don't think that, and we can disagree on this, but I don't think he wants to harm our country so much as he's got the wrong viewpoint. And so the one thing we do share is, is I want to see a new leadership in a couple of years. But I would also tell you that we live in a country, we live in a country where I think we can disagree agreeable, you know, and respect each other and admire virtue. He's also a husband and father, you know, and there are some things we can find redeeming in everyone. We can stay passionate about the issue, but we should be respectful about America. So with regards to the arts, and you asked about Wall Street. Look, you know, I have studied this thing in pretty, in pretty good detail. And as it turns out, there's three different facets of the derivative market. I don't, people's eyes are going to glaze over here and say...
Not mine.
But you know, the over-the-counter market is one of the, one of three derivative markets, and it was really unregulated. It was unregulated because we believed that banks so big wouldn't fail. And you know, that's what happened. They failed to fit. And so there had to be some reform. There's some underlying factors that I think contributed to this in terms of peeling Glass Stiegel and making some actions there that doesn't underwrite what they did. It just, it caused pressure in terms of them trying to, they end up bumbling and securitizing some risk and then tend to try to bring profits, right? But the issue is, is that fundamentally, that part of the market needs to be regulated. My issue with Dodd-Frank is we kill the deer with a tang. You know, I just, I spent some time today with a community bank. And parts of Dodd-Frank impact the community bank. They're looking now at higher compliance. Let me give you one example. There's a, they have, there's a licensing that goes on as far as working some actions related to derivatives, right? There are four individuals in this bank that actually do the work on it, but there are 80 people in the bank that have to get the licensing. And so the bank slept with the tough, because anybody who talks about this issue has to get licensed, even if they're not issuing up the contracts. So then the dilemma is for the President of the bank, is he then pass that on to the worker? That's not right. So the bank incurs the cost. They pay for the many people who have to go through the course and get the licensing, even though only four of them get issued contracts. That's just one example. They have to retain lawyers to go through, more accountants to go through this process. Our community banks were really not the problem. It was the big banks that caused it. So we overshot the mark, and then as a guy on the agricultural field, the impact, it has second order effect on our farmers. Because our farmers, right now, the 100-weight price of milk is good. In many cases, they're getting over $20 per 100-weight. But the inputs keep rising. The corn and soybean continue to rise. So that has a concomitant effect, it's eaten up on the bottom line. And one of the ways farmers address that is by hedge, they take derivatives out or they basically employ methods to try to offset, to offset their inputs. Well, the problem with Dodd-Frank is, it impacts, it impacts some of the, some of the institutions that lend money to farm credit. So farm credit then is in a position where they're not able to be in a good, a good strong position to lend to our farmers.